Board work session. Today is Wednesday, August 17th, 2022. It is 9:03 a.m. I am. This is a hybrid meeting for those wishing to attend by virtual attendance. You may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mahia. I'm the Chair of the Board. I am in transient and will be in the boardroom shortly. Vice Chair Ty Mensah is in the boardroom as well as Commissioner Gary Edwards. We have County Manager Ramiro Chavez and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell joining us as well as staff members from Public Works. The topics from today's discussion is operations of Black Lake Special District follow-up. This I'll hand it over to County Manager. Is it to you or is it to someone else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll, I'll take the lead on this conversation. Allow me to begin giving you a little bit of a background on, on the issues at hand. Now that all of you are well familiar with the steps, but just to make sure we, we cover all the bases. Back in August 31st, 2021, we received, the Commissioners received a petition from a citizens group called Clean Black Lake, which included some signatures, I believe 250 residents, including the signatures in which they were asking the Board of County Commissioners to hold a public hearing for you to consider the suspension of activities of the Black Lake Special Use District. They invoked a particular RCW, RCW 85.38.220. And let me read that because I'll open excerpts of that RCW. RCW 85.38.220 states suspension of operations, procedure and reactivation. Any special district may have its operations suspended as provided in this section. The purpose of this, of suspending a special district's operations may be initiated by, number one, the adoption of a resolution proposing such actions by the governing body of the special, of the special district. That does not apply applicable in this. Number two, the filing of a petition proposing such action with the county legislative authority of the county in which all or the largest portions of the special use districts located, which petition is signed by voters of the special district who own at least 10% of the acreage of the special district or is signed by at least 10 or more voters of the special district. And that is the applicable standard in this particular petition. And also number three states the, the adoption of a resolution proposing such action by the county legislative authority of the county, which all of the, or, or the largest portions of the special use district is located. This particular RCW state also states that if the Board of County Commissioners Legislative Authority has a, a public hearing, after the public hearing, the county legislative authority may adopt a resolution to suspend the operations of the special use district if finds such suspension to be in the public interest and shall provide a copy of the resolution to the county treasurer. Also, this piece of RCW states the no special district that owns drainage of flood control improvements may be suspended unless the legislative authority of the county accepts responsibility for operations and maintenance of the improvements during the suspension period. So that is the, the context of, 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 of the petition in the context of the RCW. The RCW is, is obviously has more information. Those are the key elements of this particular piece of legislation. So the board had a conversation and, and agreed to hold a public hearing. The public hearing was held on March 8th, 2022, 3:00 in the afternoon. There was a lot of written testimony occurring to my notes. The public oral testimony at that, that particular public hearing included just about 18. Those who testified were in support of suspension of the operations and 14 who testified that they were, were opposed to the suspensions and in fact supporting the special district of Black Lake. Fast forward, you had an opportunity in May 9th, 19th, 2022 to have a follow-up conversation related to the, the, what you heard on the public hearing. During the May 19th, 2022 briefing, there was a lot of conversation related to some of the comments you received. And as a result of that, there was, I believe, one standing question. And one standing question was if the board wanted to suspend one or any operations of the special district of Black Lake, what are those activities the special use district conducts? So let me read those activities for you. The, the Black Lake Special Use, Special Use District, the status of operations include herbicide planning and application. Herbicides are applied to less than 2% of the lake surface area each year. Reviewing and approving invoices for the districts as needed. Submitting annual reports to ecology regarding chemicals, quantities and acres covered. Submitting water quality improvement plans to public works to maintain stormwater rate reductions. Develop annual budgets, adjust, adjust charges and assessment to parcels as necessary to each, each year to meet the obligations. Preparations and submission of charges of special assessments filed to the treasurer each year. Follow up with environmental health on three streams found to have septic offlands. Monitor lake levels and alert public works when beaver activity is suspected. Monitor streams and alert public works when turbidity is high. Sample the streams entering lake every three years for elevated levels of nutrients pollutants. Determine likely sources of corrective actions where levels are elevated. Those are in, in, in larger terms, what the activities, the Black, the Black Lake Special Use District does. As you know, there's a fundamental difference between Special Use District and Lake Management District. The Special Use District is self-governed organization. They have individuals who are elected to the board and board elected by the Special Use District members and that board conducts the operations, manages the budget in a way the county does not have any oversight of the Special Use District. The difference from the Lake Management Districts, as you are well aware, is the county oversees the, the management and operations of, of those lakes. And we have two right now is the Lawrence Lake and Long Lake. And we're in the process of forming another lake, Madison Lake. And after this briefing, you have the opportunity to weigh in on the offered lake petition as well. So with that in mind, we, as the remaining question also at the last meeting of May 19th, 2022 was what is the, what will be the, the impacts to the county, both financially or otherwise? If the board choose to suspend one or all operations of the Special Use District, what will be the, the financial consequences, if there have to do with consequences to the county? Hopefully today we can touch those, those areas. And at some point, if the board would like to continue with this discussion, we will engage with board as to what is the public interest that you perceive? If you were to contemplate suspending one or any or all activities of the Special Use District? So with that in mind, I, I'll stop right now. Do you have any questions on the background? And then I will engage Elizabeth on, in following up on, 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 on the financial risks and otherwise risks the county may encounter if the board would like to continue with this process.
Questions to start off with, Commissioner Edwards?
I guess I'd like to have clarification on. Is there an option on what actions you can take? Without taking the whole thing? So I mean, you, you said options and that's what I'm curious about.
I, I, I believe that you have the option to suspend one activity, two activities or all activities the Special Use District has.
So you could pick and choose?
I believe that is the case. The, the question that I will ask the board if that is the direction is what is the public interest behind that action? And I believe that Elizabeth is going to be touching this with you. That you, if, if the board would like to contemplate this particular action, you have to be very clear in outlining and verbalizing what the public interest is of, of this action. Because you don't want to come across being arbitrary and perhaps capricious on your decision-making process.
A million dollars owed or indebtedness here?
Well, as you know, you approved the issuance of, of a bond for the Special Use District. The Special Use District secure a bond to conduct operations on the Black Lake.
You say, when you say we.
You authorize that.
The board commissioners did.
I'm sorry, I didn't say you as a commissioner, I meant the board. You authorized that and they exercised that option. And I believe that they conducted the operations of intended to the bond and they increased, increased the assessment within the Special Use District boundaries to pay for the bond. So that is an outstanding financial obligation the Special Use District is currently having.
And what, I guess my follow-up would be and what would be the, what would happen if we were to dissolve that district?
Good question. As you know, the legal counsel was very clear that at this point you do not have the option to dissolve the district. Because they, they do have a financial obligation. And since there is a financial obligation the Special Use District has, the board does not have a legislative option to dissolve the district. The only option that you have at this point, whether you like to suspend one or any operations within the district is very narrow, really the, the scope of this conversation, if I may.
Chair, that's my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah, do you have any questions, sir?
Not at this time. I want to hear from the attorneys.
Okay, so Elizabeth, I'm handing it to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Edwards' question. Or perhaps Romero's suggestions of what options you have if you were choosing to suspend any or some of the options. I would strongly encourage you not to suspend the collection of the special assessments because that could potentially be an unconstitutional impairment of the bond contract that the Black Lake District holds. And this is a bond that the Board of County Commissioners authorized the Black Lake District to issue. And that was back in 2020. So it's a significant financial risk if the board were to in any way step in and stop the activities and the special assessments associated with the bond. So I think that, that's a, something you have to be very carefully consider. The other obviously factual thing that you have to get to before you even consider taking any action is what is, what public interest is being served? And I'd just like to remind the board again that when the board created this district, they found it and all the activities that the district is currently doing, those activities were found to be in the public interest when you adopted that resolution back in 2020 as well. So you would have to be able to state facts to support your decision that the activities you once found to be in the public interest are no longer in the public interest. If you get to that threshold, then you'd have to consider what activities of any you would want to suspend that do not impair the collection of special assessments or the actual bond itself.
Can I ask a question right there, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Just to be clear, when you say the adopting resolution blessed certain activities, like what, how specific were those activities? Cause I'm, I'm just theoretically, if the, if the, if it said water quality applica, application of, you know, certain herbicide treatments or I don't know what it says. But then just theoretically, I'm not saying this is what's happening, but then theoretically the Commissioners decide to use extremely illegal poisonous materials. You, I would think the board would. It doesn't list, I guess what I'm getting at is the resolution from way back when doesn't say how they're going to treat. It's going to say, it doesn't say what chemicals they're going to use or exactly what methodologies they're going to use to, to engage. I would imagine, I probably saw it at some point in the past, but I don't remember. That's why I'm asking. I'm imagining that it says something like water quality activity, you know, something higher level. I guess I'm getting at the point that, and again, I don't think this is the situation, but I do think theoretically you could have something that ran afoul of the public interest based on the specific choices being made. Even if the overall category of activities were blessed in the adopting resolution. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, how specific is this? You said the adopting resolution, we, we said they could do these activities. And I'm, and I'm asking what activities did we say? We, the board, back in whatever time it was that this was adopted. How specific was it?
I don't have the original resolution in front of me. So I can't answer that. But theoretically, if, say ecology found that the practices of the Black Lake Special District was not in compliance with the environmental regulations, that could be a basis to say, hey, we thought you were going to be in compliance with all the regulations when you were going to do these activities. You're, we understand you're out of compliance with ecology. That's no longer in the public interest. I mean, you could potentially have a fact pattern like that. But before you get to potential, I mean, that, that's my response to your question. If that answered your question.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking that the, I am concerned about this public interest component. And to me, it's less controlled by whatever the resolution said because I'm sure that they're doing, using different chemicals and different stuff now than when they started. I think that's the whole point. I think it's more compromised by the congruity with the Lake Management Districts like Lawrence and Long. I think that's where the board would run into trouble trying to make a finding that suspension is in the public interest if they're using the same stuff that the county is authorizing in a Lake Management District. That to me is a more, is a more confining thing for that, for the board to make that finding than it is what it said in the resolution from however many years ago, which I can't imagine was specific enough to control exactly what they're doing now. It's kind of a technical point, but I think it's important. Sorry, go ahead.
So I, I just to reiterate what I've said. If, if the board is going to move forward with a suspension, they first have to make the factual finding that to suspend, well, identify what you're suspending and how the suspending those activities would be in the public interest. And then you have to be very careful to examine that whatever, if you choose to suspend certain interest activity, that there is no impairment of the collection of the special assessments for the bond. Otherwise, that could be a huge potential financial and legal risk.
But also, if I may, Elizabeth, in addition to for, if the board will consider the suspension of one or any activities within this Black Lake Special Use District, in addition to clearly verbalize the public interest, I think the board needs to put in the position to say for how long that suspension will be and what, what is next? Because just suspending a, any activities, especially the district without having a next of a strategy, you know, and again, that will be very difficult for the board to put on a, on a, on a in that decision-making process. So, and that was if, if, if I was to suggest the board would consider, now that I'm suggesting you should, because my recommendation is right off the bat for you to reject this request. And because I personally don't see any, any public interest in, in considering the, the, the financial risks the county will incur. That will continue to be my suggestion for you to reject this petition, but that's just the staff's point of view.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
I don't know who I'm going to ask this of, so somebody here maybe can answer it for me, maybe Tim, I don't know. My understanding is the Special Use District is following all of the rules from the Department of Ecology in application of product and trying to fix things that may be amiss at Black Lake. Whether that, specifically in reference to water quality issues. I mean, they're not, they're not out there doing something they're not supposed to do, is my understanding, right?
Yeah, I can speak to that. To the, to the best of our knowledge, the herbicidal activities out there are managed under an APM permit, an aquatic plant, an algae management permit issued by ecology exactly the same as we operate under for our managed lakes. So we have no reason to believe that, that the Black Lake Special District is, is not operating correctly under that permit.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any further questions? Let's go into discussion then.
From counsel.
Anything else you want to add, Elizabeth?
No, not at this point.
Do you have any recommendation from your legal perspective?
Well, yes, I, my recommendation would not to pursue any suspension of the Black Lake District operations.
Thank you.
Okay, can I ask another question then for? That's the end of. So Elizabeth, I know we've gone over this and over this, so I apologize, but I just want to kneel down and ask you, because I keep, I keep getting stuff from, from, from various people in the community. The most recently was an Attorney General opinion from 1989 about this formation question. And the opinion is discussing a version of the statute that changed is what the best. I didn't have a chance to read the red legislative history, but the statute was changed in 90, the opinions from 89, the statute changed in 91 and 03. It's got a section, subsection three, and I'm talking about 8538180 here that specifically says engage in river, Laker River restoration, aquatic plant control and water quality enhancement activities. So I'm just struggling to understand why I'm being provided with opinions that predate the actual statute play. Or is there, is, is there anything to, have you seen that? Or I don't know if you were copied on the same communication I got.
I, I was not, I, I have not received that information from, through the county.
Okay.
And anything that happened, I mean, if, if you say it's addressing a statute that we're no longer operating under, I'm not sure what applicability this AGO has on, on the issues before you. Because you're operating under chapter 8538.
Right, and 180 sets out the powers of a special district, which includes the, you know, aquatic plant control and water quality enhancement activity. I know we've gone over this whole thing. And again, I went through this with ecology myself, just basically getting their opinion that the, a district formed under this statute is not limited to flood control. It seems to be even more explicit than I thought when I pulled the newer version of the statute. And so I'm now I'm really trying to figure out where any of this is coming from. Unless there's some argument that it was formed under the, I mean, but this, this district wasn't formed before 1989.
No, it was in July 30, 2013.
So it's even, I don't know, I guess I missed. I wrote a letter to the community back in 2020, 2020, I think, where I basically just summarized what ecology had told me. And it was a little more complicated argument, cross-referencing different statutes. And now I'm, but when I'm pulling this and it's not even, it doesn't even require the, the cross-references. It's right there. So I'm more kind of wondering what I missed first time around or what ecology missed when they explained this to me because it seems even clearer than, than I previously thought. But if you hadn't seen that, maybe I'll just withdraw that question.
I, I want to ask. I'd like to go back to your initial question, what activities was listed on the resolution?
Yeah, yeah.
The resolution was approved on July 30, 2013.
2013?
13.
You got it?
It seems like you don't believe me.
No!
Yeah, so on the, that's resolution 14916. And within that resolution, let me read it just a small piece. And related to your question, what type of activities are listed?
Yeah.
The preferred management approach of the AVAMP as the Inter-Integrated Aquatic Vegetation Management Plan incorporates existing manual methods in conjunction with aquatic herbicides to control non-native invasive plants and reduce nuisance densities of native plants such as water, not, I can't pronounce that word. This approach includes herbicide applications into consecutive years with manual control as needed, followed by manual methods on the following three years. So it's prescribed for applications of herbicides. If that answered the question that you had earlier.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was.
Yep.
So I guess my point was, I just finished up. I mean, my point was, I don't feel that it would be impossible to find a shifting of activities away from manual and using new herbicides that were maybe poisonous. I don't feel like that that's a limiting document, precluding a finding of a public interest problem by the board. What I find more limiting is the fact that, and I think would be legally fatal frankly, would be for us to make that finding when we have the same or very similar work plans in our own Lake Management Districts, right now.
Yeah, because the Lake Management District includes aquatic herbicides. And that is the key.
Well, when it lists very specific ones, it does.
So, so, and that is really, I appreciate you making that connection, Commissioner, because that is probably what, what I feel that if the board continues on this process, you may become across as very arbitrary. Because on one hand, you authorize the applications of herbicides on the Lake Management District, and here you consider suspending. What is the public interest?
I think it would open us up, that's.
Yep. I continue to state, my suggestion to the board is to reject this petition.
Okay, Commissioners, any further questions?
Are we going to make that decision right now, which I'm prepared to do?
Is the conversation.
No, okay. I mean, as we wind down, I'm ready to put my, on the line, you know. I'm with you.
Madam Chair, if I would like to exercise my suggestion.
Get it over with.
For me, I think we've been discussing this matter for a long time. Since the public hearing. I don't know, I feel like at every conversation, we always come back to the same point on what our scope is, and it's, it's really not there. So for me, there's, you know, not really much to discuss, but Commissioner Mansour, do you? Do you have, need any further information or?
I don't think so. I mean, I certainly appreciate the citizens who are worried about minimizing herbicide use. I've asked those, I think, pretty tough questions earlier this year when we were looking at the plans. And I wanted, I asked for Tim for a lot of background and help. And we, he suggested that we get our IVAMPs for our Lake Management Districts updated and look at best practices and alternative strategies. I'm all for all of that. Protecting groundwater, all those different issues are important. But this is just not the right mechanical way to go about this issue. And I think it's from a very, from a whole different, a whole range of angles from my perspective. One is, I have a lot of respect for, I call these micro-democratic processes where, you know, a group of, a community has gotten together, followed a statute, formed a district. They have commissioners, they have an elected body. And to a great extent, I'm going to respect that, even if I did disagree with kind of what they're doing. Second, to allow them to vote to increase their rates, to pay for bonds, and then to pull the rug out and say, what you thought you were paying for, we're not going to let you do, I think they would feel betrayed and like we tricked them. And I'm not comfortable with that at all, even if financially and legally it's, it's tenable to do that. Which sounds like Elizabeth saying it is, as long as we keep charging them and paying them. But I wouldn't feel comfortable with that. It just doesn't seem appropriate. Third, I think from a legal perspective, we could never support a finding of the, in the public interest when we have a very similar program operating in our own county-supervised Lake Management Districts. We'd be challenged legally in a heartbeat and we would lose. So that, that's pretty much the death knell there. But a fourth piece of this is that if we suspended these activities, what's the plan? What's the alternative? You know, if there was a plan in place, you know, and again, we'd probably be using that plan in our own Lake Management Districts, this, you know, mythical, alternative, magic way to more healthily manage our lakes, but it's not there. So it would be irresponsible from my perspective to suspend activities when we haven't thought through or figured out. And I think this is a very, very, very complicated issue. One of the most complicated issues I've confronted as Commissioner, Lake Ecology and Management. So that's another reason from my perspective why suspension does not make sense as a strategy. I think what we need to do, and the Black Lake folks have come and just said to me, we basically look to your Lake Management Districts for, they piggybacked on some of the research we did and studies that we commissioned and recommendations that came from our own Lake Management Districts. So I think we need to get to work with our Lake Management Districts. And I bet you, Black Lake will, if we find a better way, I bet you Black Lake Commissioners will, will follow us. But there's, I just, there's no way from the standpoint of where we're at that we can do what we are being asked to do.
Commissioner Edwards?
I guess my question is about process. Are we intending on making a motion and taking a vote? Or are we just doing a thumbs up and down?
If the board agrees with my recommendation, I will drop the letter. I think it will be proven to draft a letter for you to sign rejecting the petition.
Okay. I don't know how detailed you want that letter to be. I don't know if my seatmates agree with kind of those four bases I laid out. Would it be appropriate to kind of, just at a high level include that, so?
If you like, then I can touch base with you to make sure that I capture those four points. And I will drop the letter for your consideration, but I'd really like to hear that direction.
I'm with Commissioner Mansour.
Commissioner Mansour, yeah, those four points are really spot on. And, you know, I want to say to the citizens for a clean Black Lake, you know, I, they were very engaged and they continue to be very engaged. And, you know, I, my question was, and it was mostly for them, right? Why not get involved in that democratic process, right? Because they elect their own commissioners. It's like, why not get involved in that? And sometimes when we don't agree on how something is being run, you know, and maybe getting more involved in the meetings or running for one of the commissioner seats is the way to go if, you know, if you don't like the direction something is going, maybe running for that seat. But from, you know, from the four points that Commissioner Mansour just outlined very well, you know, I feel like there's not much that we're really allowed to do legally. And so that's why I'm in full agreement with my seatmates. I think a letter kind of specifying those four points is, is a way to move forward from this.
Thank you. So just to be clear and just for the record, my recommendation is for you to reject the petition to suspend the operations of Black Lake Special District. And I believe the board is in agreement on that. So I'd like you to verbalize that. Yes.
So I got my phone off.
The result of that, we, we did a warning for you to send a letter outlining the four points that Commissioner Mansour just stated.
Elizabeth, were you going to add something?
Uh, no, I don't have anything more to add.
Okay, anything else, Commissioners? Well, it is 9:39 a.m. and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.